We're going to the open public's meeting at chapter 231, public balls of 1975. This meeting has been duly advertised in the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel. Municipal clerk of the township has been duly notified and the requirements of the posting of notices have been met.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fellas, yeah. Sully?
Yeah.
Chingling?
Yeah.
Kowalski?
Yeah.
Cunningham?
Yeah.
Doyle?
Yeah.
Regoso? Michael?
Yeah.
Trace?
Yeah.
Brett? We have a bar.
We are going to the office?
Yes. Joanna?
Yes. Yes, my word is insisting that I do a note here.
It's okay.
You know, I-
So a bit of a formality, but however-
It is, even though we think it's not that serious.
Obviously insert your name with the blanks and-
And just go ahead and read it.
How about it?
Okay. I Joanna Kowalski do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same to the government established in the United States at this date under the authority of the people, so help me God. I Joanna Kowalski do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-1 nor disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey's statute 18A12-1 and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
No, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have our first public comment for agenda items only. Members of the public are encouraged to speak during the public portion of the meeting and according to board policy 0167, matters should only be brought to the board after all that avenues within the chain of command have been exhausted. Please remember that the board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on the following matters. Personnel, anticipated and pending litigation negotiations, attorney-client, I'm sorry, attorney-client privilege, a warranted invasion of individual privacy tactics and techniques in protecting safety and property of the public. When addressing the Board of Education, please respect the following procedures. Direct all your comments to the board president, not individual board members. State your full name and address before commenting. Do we have anyone who would like to talk? Oh, um, I think I needed to say I make a motion to open a public comment. I'll see. Thank you.
All of you?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Now you can say it, John.
Seeing none, I will close public comment. Do I have a second?
Perfect.
Thank you. Um, executive session, we have leave for executive session, it should be-
It's gonna be fairly lengthy, unfortunately, we're gonna talk about staff and stuff like that. It's like, it's like, what, 45?
I would say 45.
45 minutes?
Okay.
Dylan, I can't guarantee 45, I'll try to keep up. Alright.
Okay. So I can make a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion carried. So, do I have to say that?
All in favor?
All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
No.
Thank you.
I wonder why my son always asks for money to get a cookie at school. Those look more like cheese. Do you have more order? I only have two. I want to get a cookie. How much is it? I think there's 75 cents a cookie. Yeah, 50 cent.
Stupid thing when I was like 30 minutes late, I'm like, I don't want to miss the whole meeting. You're trying to eat.
Yes. It was a lot to go through.
That'll make Monday short. That's why I was like, what's up?
Maybe you got COVID.
Gonna have everybody taking care of you.
And have a public vote. Service comes to town.
I hope they bring a sign. Can I put a sign on my computer, please? I'm being like serious. I want to write like, let's settle.
That was Jeff's idea.
I'm gonna put a thing that says, teachers, let's settle.
That was Jeff's idea.
Well, I'm gonna write like, settle now. I'm making one, putting it on here, being serious. Alright. And I'm gonna put a sign in my car when I do all these pickups that run or two from now on. And I run it like every day with different stuff.
It's funny seeing that, like, we're into cars with these signs and I'm like driving 2015 and something like that.
Just get one that says, settle now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna write, settle now. I did it. When I went in there. I wasn't able to look behind the door. Like a year.
Alright, Rachel. Alright, make a motion to come out of executive at 7:54. Do I have a second?
Second.
All of you?
Aye.
Alright, um, we have the new employment appointments that we discussed approving this evening. So at this point, I make a motion to approve the new employment appointments as listed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on that? If not, if you pull the roll, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Chingling?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Regoso?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Fellas?
Yes.
Brett?
Yeah.
Project carries.
Alright, uh, long-term or long-range facility plan amendment. Give us plenty of time.
Yes, so this was justified in order to apply for the rod grants for capital improvements that we had mentioned within the budget. We do have to amend the long-range facility plan and this is considered a major amendment, so of course it needs court approval. So all this does is give Vesta Associates, the Architect of Record, allowance to in fact submit the long-range facility plan amendment.
And that amendment includes all those items that were previously discussed?
Correct.
What is the cost associated with the planned amendment unit?
Uh, I do not know. They're hourly rate.
I mean, just out of curiosity, how long, like, what do you think? Just like a thousand bucks or like?
It might be a little bit more based on the actual work that's involved with actually updating and using the LRE system. It's not the most user-friendly system, so this is why the architect is handling it, because I-
But it's not, it's not a major expense. We have current available in our budget. So you need a motion to approve that, I guess?
Yes, please.
Alright, make a motion to approve the long-range facility plans listing this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, alright. Any other questions? Uh, hold on.
Chingling?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Regoso?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Fellas?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Brett?
Yeah.
Project carries.
Alright, you want to go in order to budget executive summary first or?
So many names appear though, too. Yeah, I already thought, policies, we just need to set the policy committee meeting, because we got a committee of policy.
Okay. We can do that, we can do the policy committee meeting first.
Yeah.
When are May, May 20th?
Good question.
Fourth or 20th?
May 20th.
Then that would be May 16th.
16th of October.
16th is okay with May, how many seconds?
May 16th.
16th, okay. Is it now or tomorrow? Yeah, the final thing.
You want to do 4 o'clock, 4:30? 4:30 better?
4 or 4:30, whatever.
We can do 4.
4.
We can do 4.
Alright, I'll send that on a calendar, I think.
Yep.
So under this, um, facilities findings, it says something about review webinars, presentations, have we ever did that? That's every-
Yeah, that was really good for us.
But you will see if you click on the attachment, anything that's updated, yeah, highlighted in yellow and those presentations are attached there in the assessment notes in data column.
I saw you have a few Detroit.
I saw it. TV ads, gray hair.
AP chemistry, so I'm like, what the hell is he talking about?
Yeah, because they're tough, you know, they're absolutely around table.
I thought, like, he got that from the super tiny round table. He's like, you know, AP physics, like, we don't have that.
Well, that's the thing, you talk to her for 15 minutes, she puts 15 seconds of that and that's what she pulls out. How do you?
But this may work.
Obviously, the format of this looks familiar because it's basically the same executive summary that we handed out before. Anything again that was changed or updated is in fact highlighted in yellow. So we're not gonna go through the whole thing again, just touch on those points in yellow. To follow up with some of the, with the updates that have been sent based on stabilization aid as well as the recommendation and requirement by the county office of education to approve the budget that was sent to the county on March 20th. So we want to go to page 13. Obviously, right under stated, as we learned about the stabilization aid, we are eligible to receive the stabilization aid of $168,867, which equates to 66% of the $256,000 that we lost in state aid for the 23-24 year. There have been some questions posed by different districts because the money technically is being received in 23-24, I mean, 22-23, so it will have to be shown in the 23-24 as, in the 23-24 budget as fund balance. So there's no direct correlation to a revenue line that will equate to an expense line, so stay with me here. Again, going into fund balance, you'll see the highlighted yellow beneath of that. The county required the fund balance to be $250,000, which statistically is the minimum, which is the greater of 2% of your current appropriations or $250,000, whichever is greater. 2% of our general current funds in the 22-23 year equates to about $511,000. So given that the budget was already bare bones, excuse me, the county said they were approvable as long as there was $250,000 in that fund balance.
Did we not know that there was supposed to be that amount in fund balance, like, the statute?
It's not, it's been recommended, however, knowing previous conversations and using fund balance instead of increasing taxes, we have used all of it. It had been noted by administration that that's not the best way to budget, because you do want a little bit of savings. That was also the county's point of you have extra expenses that are unforeseen, even though we budget for contingencies, sometimes those don't always hold enough weight. So I did put in here the historical use of the fund balance to balance previous budgets. And as you can see, those numbers are listed, so it's a pretty decent amount. We'll go over to page 14, which kind of rolls into the maintenance reserve. We have not deposited any money into the maintenance reserve or the capital reserve in the last two years or three years. Given that we're using all of fund balance to balance a budget, there is no money left there for to in fact transfer into those reserves, which is a double-edged sword, because we do have decent reserves. The maintenance reserve is being used to balance part of the budget as well in order to pay for that required maintenance section of the budget. Again, anticipated balance as of June 30th, 2023, yes, 2023, is $347,000. I think that should say 2024, because we're going to use money in the 23-24 budget. Sorry about that. So obviously, that's less than the last two years' worth of use since the previous year, but the current budget was $525,000. Again, with capital reserve, we have not made deposits, however, we have taken money out. We just have not actually used it to, in fact, to do any of those projects that were listed, that the money was taken out to pay for it. So again, all of that money is, if we want to spend it, again, with rod grants, so we will get 40% back with that. So again, we have to put that money out and then if we do, if and when we do get the rod grants money, that would go right back into capital reserve. However, we, again, have not put actual, any money back in there. Going into debt service, so it's continuation from bottom page of 14 up to page 15. The total that has not been passed along to taxpayers is about $2 million. Debt service was for the referendum or leave-of-ear flipping project. So the total of that is roughly, I believe, 2.8 million with interest. So that is, began in fiscal year 14 and will run out in fiscal year 2020. So as of now, we usually have the budget for about $196,000 for that debt service. So again, that money has not been passed along to taxpayer or debt relief. And again, that would be above beyond these 2%. So it's a separate category of debt service.
Is everybody in the stand there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page 17, just noting differences that we have increased $1 million dollars from operating budget totals down $27 million. And then again, on page 18, those item numbers have changed and that's based on, the original executive summary did not include the capital projects and the capital reserve money that we were taking out, so that total is 1.9 million. So now that total is, is in these numbers. You'll notice the fund balance has actually decreased. So we did take $250,000 out of that, but then reinstated it with the 168. So really, we're still in the hole for about $81,000. Those are all of the changes. The stabilization aid, those require an application. It's very minimal, it's an Excel spreadsheet, however, the categories, I think I put that. Go back to the April 24th meeting. Under operations, you will see the actual request for the aid, because again, the aid needs to have a voter resolution saying that we want it or accepting it. And then again, under the administrative content, you actually see the application. So the application lists the items that you can use the funds board. It would be tied to the out-of-district tuition costs based on the reduction of that to balance out the 250 that we have to take out of fund balance. There's a lot of swinging back and forth, I understand that.
Can I say, I meant, this is probably not, but in, how, what, why is it that we're spending 1.4 million this year as opposed to, like, or 1 million more as opposed to last year? What are the big tickets that are?
Because then that does count the projects. So the general operating fund does include the projects of 1.9 million. So really, the budget is lower, but then you add that $2 million in there and that's where you're gonna get the increase of a million.
So was that, that 1.9 would actually be down 900 or something like that?
Correct.
Okay. And with the 1860, whatever it is that we're getting from the state of 1600?
160.
Okay, you, I know the district has a supply, how we're utilizing those funds?
Correct.
Has that been grown up yet or?
That is on the agenda, on the April 24th agenda. That is under operations, item number 19. So you'll see the actual resolution under the public content, so it's the full resolution. And then under administrative, you'll see the minimal application that needs to be submitted.
So could you maybe just highlight what we're gonna be utilizing with?
Out-of-district?
Out-of-district tuition, yes. Yes.
Out-of-district tuition.
Correct.
That's what we do.
So in order, in order to, as the, per the county's requirement, to have the fund balance at $250,000, we then had to decrease the special education line item by $250,000. That was just a blanket $250,000.
But that's where you chose to take it, right?
Correct.
It would've been taken anywhere, but that's where registration chose to take it.
Correct. Knowing then that we're going to put back 168 into it, because that's where, we took out 250, now we're getting another 168 back, so technically, we're still underneath $1,000.
It isn't, that was a guessing game, that had to be perfect, so we didn't have some of them.
Correct. But we also did, we already did take out the extra contingencies within there. So at least it makes it still over there, putting a little bit more back in there.
So we're in a better spot than we were.
Correct. Now with $68,000 better. Yes.
So in other words, this is basically the same exact budget that we already, you already presented, except you got $170,000 additional state aid.
Correct.
Right, moving to 250 in fund balance and then putting the 168 back in.
Right.
Now we don't have to raise the tax at this point.
No, the tax, they kind of exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
It's how it's distributed and?
So theoretically, if you take the same exact budget and you got the 170, if you reduce the amount raised by taxation, that would bring that number down to, what, like, 3%? So it's 4.5. Right now, the budget would put us in a 4.51% increase. If you calculate, if you reduce that dollar amount by the 168,000, what would that percentage be?
1.46.
So it would be 3%, 3. something.
3.7, yes. But that also is another double-edged sword, if we're reducing tax levy, then we're not able to increase to the full amount. We're gonna lose our bank cap as well, that's going to expire. So technically, to kind of make the budget a little bit better in terms of budgeting and tax levy, it should've been a higher increase, given that over the past four or five years, it was only increased about 3.81, when over four years, times 2% per year, would've been 8.
Keep in mind, a 160 is a one-shot deal, alright, so that's, we're only getting it, we're not guaranteed for future, so we work.
Right, and actually, we talked a lot about the grant stuff running out.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot of things are happening, too.
Well, keep in mind, we are budgeting straight to the bone, so, you know, she put the historical fund balance that we rely on this year's money to balance next year's budget quite a bit, and it's not a great way to budget, knowing that we have budgeted so tight. We're not gonna have that money left over, I was here. We're not, we just sold.
We did kind of skip over in the part of fund balance. My fault, we're going fast. The, the budget is balanced by utilizing funds that we're anticipating to have in the 22-23 budget. So again, that's additional money that if we did have it left over, it could go to capital reserve, it could go to maintenance reserve, it could go to tuition reserve, it could go to emergency reserve. But since we're already using it, that will call off of the surplus, the excess that we have left over from the 22-23 budget. So we're already taking out, we, um, current year, 22-23, we budgeted $1.2 million. If that's what we had left over, so then make that fund balance zero in this budget, just saying, then we already have 4.450,000 less to utilize in next year's budget. So yes, while we have had it available, it has aided in tax relief over the past few years. But now it's, it's time to use the tax levy numbers.
So I just want to say something, and I don't want to take a tax credit.
Let me take a tax credit.
No, and-
When you prefaced it with all that.
Yeah.
Hard, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I just, when we, and again, I agree with everything you're saying, I'm not questioning any of what you presented, but, and this is just a comment, actually, to the rest of the board members, because maybe my understanding was incorrect, but in our last meeting, we had the same exact budget presented to us and we were hoping that this legislation went through in the state that would refund some of our state aid. And it was my interpretation that if that were to come through, that that would be, that would help offset some of what the tax increase we were looking at was. We were at 4.5%, whatever we got for the additional state aid would be a reduction to that 4.5%. That was my understanding. I don't know if I misunderstood that incorrectly or not. And again, I mean, yeah.
That's okay, you know, we, you guys make our professional recommendations today and we can't come here responsibly say to you that you can use that for tax.
And at that time, I don't believe we had any restraints and/or guidelines as to what that money would be recommended to be used for and/or approved for, so.
And most of the emails that I saw, the gist or the, you know, what the theme of that money was, it's three store staffing positions. Keep in mind, again, we're raising it 4.5, but we also reduced that staff and health benefit by 200,000, which is again, equates to three teaching positions. So, you know, we can't sit here responsibly saying, yes, use it for tax relief, because ultimately, well, we know this is a one-shot deal. And if we don't generate the 168 for taxes for next year, really, it turns into a 320,000 problem. So, you know, with the way that we've budgeted in the past, we have benefited from being able to have, use the last, better terms, left over money to balance next year's budget. We know 100% right now that we're not gonna have those funds available next year. So your 24-25 budget, I'm nervous, I'll be honest with you, I'm playing this on tape. I mean, I'm really, really nervous about that. You know, nervous about the health contingencies that I told you about, we're nervous about the special education programs. Like, we've always positioned ourselves to be able to handle those people. But we're budgeting so tight to bone, no, we're not gonna have left over money. We don't generate revenue, but keep in mind, we're letting, what, 275,000 of bank cap expire. Like, that's how, we're not gonna be able to do that. We've been very, very tax mindful as of work, like, there's no need in community to come here and say, oh, you're raising my taxes. You know, we've been very, very tax mindful. But look at, even just the debt service alone is $2 million that could've been taxed. No, not with one payment, 10 years of going. And that's what the voters of this community agreed to take on that tax burden. And guess what? We, we now be accountable. So, well, you know, going back to it-
Dusty taxes out their tax increase every single year and no one says anything.
Most districts do.
Yeah, no one says anything in the community. Why shouldn't we really try to hold in this tight, you know, budget when Dusty won't even be considerate about their budget towards the community? I mean, we really need to, you know, figure this out, because we can't keep it like this.
And this isn't, right, we're not maxing it out, right? So we're trying to be, like, it's meat in the middle, we're up to staff.
I want to do nothing and I want to hold to it too, I don't want to either lose it. But at the same time, if everyone else around us is increasing it or holding to it, you know, this is where, what we're looking at, then we need to, you know, get with it.
I mean, I can't, I can only do what I can do, I'm here, I mean, I'm not on Dusty's board, I'm not council committee person. I'm not accounting commissioner, so I don't disagree with everything you just said. I mean, one point I'll make is, you know, to contradict Troy's point about the bond, is that that money that we use to pay the debt service is taxpayer money. It was taxpayer money that was, we had in reserves. So taxpayers, we could've charged the taxpayers more and kept more of their money in reserve, but it was paid for by the taxpayer.
Agreed, just like the money that we're putting up properly to those rod grants, it's taxpayer money. But guess what? We're enjoying, we're, we have the ability to apply for these rod grants because we have budgeted this way and have had some.
I don't disagree.
I'm gonna tell you right now, we're, 24-25 budget will be one of the toughest ones I've ever seen. I'm telling you that for right now.
I mean, it's.
We're, we're not going to realize the, I don't want to say that our savings accounts are going to go way down. And we're not going to have the ability, we're going to have to, like, you're going to have to look at a decent tax increase next year.
Yeah, I.
Simply given the increase in salaries alone.
I don't disagree with anything, the way you guys said, I'm just putting my, my two cents in. Um, I mean, with that, I think something else that we should do in this budget year is, we're, if we don't do all of them, at least you have of those coaching positions, put those people back in the classroom and eliminate the people, I shouldn't say the people, eliminate the positions that were backfilled by those coaching positions, because it doesn't seem, you know, at least in the data that we're seeing, that we're getting much value for that, um, in the student achievement. And we're not going to be able to pay for it by the following year. So rather than, you know, rip the bandaid off the following year, I, I think it'd be more appropriate to, to move that forward, you know, uh, incrementally. So I don't know what your opinion is. I mean, that's really, I guess, a staffing thing, but in order to purify, but, but I'm tying it back into the budget. And I'll just.
That would be a conversation I would want to have, too.
Right, yes, sir.
I mean, there are a few of those are tied to the grant, so, you know, that'll be a conversation to be had.
Right, I mean.
It sounds like we're going to have to have a lot of those kind of conversations now.
And we kind of knew that going in with the grants, given the short period of time that.
And that's been an awesome conversation with people that are involved with their grant funding.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want.
So that's.
It's, it's, there's a personnel issue involved, I realize that. I'm just saying in general, that kind of conversation.
So.
So the tax would still seem.
Would stay four five.
What about the, the cuts?
Stay the same. Still.
So the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, I'm kind of lost on that. Where did that go? We're just putting that into reserves?
We had, we had to decrease the fund balance by two hundred and fifty, so that the actual balance of the fund balance was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So to take that out of the expenditure side, we decreased special education by two hundred and fifty thousand. Now, again, that could've gone anywhere, but just based on there was enough money in there to take two fifty out of it, just to make it one line item. And then we're just putting that one sixty-eight back in there. So we're taking that one sixty-eight, it's going to show inclusive with that four fifty-five that we're using in the twenty-two, twenty-three year in anticipated funds. So that's going to be four fifty-five plus one sixty-eight, totaling six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of money to be used from the twenty-two, twenty-three budget to balance the next year's budget. And then on the expenditure side, we literally just took two fifty out of the special ed and then put one sixty-eight back.
So in other words, this is a six percent tax increase, offset by the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars down to four point five percent. Is that an incorrect statement?
I don't want that one.
No.
It's a four point five percent tax increase, just budgeting with simple math, essentially budgeting.
If it took the same exact numbers that you have now, you forgot about the state aid, it would be a six percent increase.
Because it came from tax levy.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, simple math is simple math, although that's not where it's going.
Right.
Well, what, should we figure out who's, who's where?
Yes, because ultimately, I have not put a.
We can talk here forever.
We gotta put a.
Yes, we can.
I gotta put a PowerPoint.
You.
Oh, San Fernando.
Yeah, we have to.
True.
We have to put a PowerPoint, yeah, right? So ultimately, we do need to know where the group stands on that, because it's worked, it's been done in the next two days.
Well, I said my point, I said again.
Are you asking us now?
I thought that.
We need to, yeah.
When we left the meeting, our last meeting, that any additional money we got was going to go, uh, taxably, that was my impression.
That was my impression. Okay, I was okay with some tax increase, but not four point five.
That was my impression too, that we would reuse the money to ultimately.
Well, that was, that was what I was thinking too, but looking through this again, I think we have to just do what we have to do.
Yeah, what's our question?
I don't want to generate, is it?
Is it? So one point nine million dollars, and things need to be down to the school? Is that including like those fireheads and the?
The tax money coming out of capital reserves, that's not a separate, general tax.
That's not already, that's, that's money we have or attributing towards project. If, and guess what? If we don't have to get the projects done, that goes right back to our savings.
Right.
So it's.
And like technically, those are the rod grant projects. So we should be able to allocate forty percent back of the total cost.
I'm sorry.
What, um, I don't know, exactly versus not right now. Um, staffing issues, I thought part of that was being addressed.
Well, there's two, there's two hundred thousand, that's still cut, so that's two hundred thousand dollars in the staffing line and health benefit, which is equivalent to three teaching positions and a staff.
Okay, that's all, I don't know what I'm supposed to.
Those cuts are still made, so we're not putting that money, so those, that still needs to recover on top of the four point five, yeah.
That hasn't changed with this new proposal.
No. No.
Right?
Okay, I thought that was going to help, and then the state aid was going to help, so we were really going to be looking at more like a two, two and a half, once we made those.
I think that those, those cuts were already calculated in the four point five percent that they had added.
Yeah.
Wow, I thought, correct, that was all discussed.
No, no, they were already, yes, yes.
I mean, I may have turned something out, like, well, why would you do more cuts to get it down? But I don't remember the point.
Well, I think too, we, when we had that discussion, we didn't realize that we were going to have to put two fifty back in fund balance.
Correct, that was, that was.
I mean, that's, that's.
Maybe that is the issue, because that's how I took it with that.
Yeah, that's the wrench.
Those, that's two hundred thousand.
That's what I'm like, that is.
One sixty-eight was really, we were looking at like a two.
When you say put it back, you're not putting anything back, you're just moving numbers around from this line to this line to this line.
Right. Yes.
So it's the exact same thing, just the numbers are different, now again, differently. They all add up to the same thing at the end of that.
I agree with Michelle, I think we just have to accept that this is what it is right now and go with it and, you know, address those issues in the future, but they've got to be addressed. We, we talked about the staffing.
And I don't want you guys to feel defeated, I mean, we should be able to celebrate the tax that we were able to save over time. Unfortunately, it's costly, and that's what it's.
Nothing's cheaper right now, you all never had.
We're not feeling this or feeling it.
Well, most districts max out, like, till, until they max them out.
Well, just things for us, because now we don't know what Delsey's going to do, so now.
Well, Delsey's going to max theirs out.
They do what they want to do here.
Yeah, we, we, we can control that.
Probably for someone else at the top, they're paying a lot, a lot.
And sure change our kids.
I mean, it is what it is of the outside, we don't really have much control.
I'm just saying, Delsey doesn't look at us and be like, man, they're not going to max theirs out, so we can do it hard this year. Like, they.
They do what they got to do.
They do what they got to do, and then they have so much extra staff, resources, money, facilities, and we're sitting here trying to figure out how we're going to fix our, you know, staffing problem.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I mean, they, I mean, they had huge surpluses and huge reserve accounts. They moved millions of dollars in those reserve accounts every year, and it, you know.
But then they're still only, they're only doing that and not having fund balance and excess, that you're only taxing at two percent. So if you're still sticking with the two percent base, then that's, that's only a two, two percent.
Well, the whole reason, the whole, the whole, the whole way that we were able to do what we did over the years was that we whittled down at those overestimates, so to speak, and those giant.
Well, they put contingencies, like, they're contingents, but being prepared for, for next year, like, we have six people that are getting, they're going to be eligible for, for help like this, too.
Well, no, I guess, how you get those big things is you overestimate everything, you agree? You, your contingencies, you inflate the contingency, and that's how we were able to move all that money into.
Well, I don't know, I, I agree with that, because ultimately, you never know, especially if it's just going to lock the door, right? So you're budgeting now, like, you hope it falls in your benefit, then you can put money in the reserves.
Well, the only way to get money to go into reserves is when you've collected more than you've spent.
Correct.
Right, so you've, you've inflated the contingency.
Yeah, but it hasn't just been inflated to be inflated, it's been inflated for a person.
No, it's positioning ourselves.
Yeah, I think it's the term that I have an issue with, it's inflated, it's a contingency that's the amount that we're putting in the budget
You're positioning ourselves.
so that we have that money there for if and when there is something that we need to pay for. If a kid moves into the district, needs special education out of district, we're going to also need transportation, another child, we need a one-to-one nurse. So that money's going to need to be coming from somewhere.
Well, let me use a different analogy, it's like, if, if you got to get to the doctors at three o'clock, right? And you know it's going to take you.
You have a board meeting at six o'clock.
At six o'clock. And you know, it's, it's.
You go to Chick-fil-A at five thirty.
It's only fi, it's only five minutes from your house, okay? You, when you get huge reserves, you leave, your house is five thirty, and give yourself a thirty minute window to get there, even though you know you can get there in five. When you have no reserves, you leave six minutes before the board meeting, and you're there at, at the meeting, you know what I mean? Is that a good analogy, like?
No.
You're putting it in there, I mean, you're being, you're being conservative.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with your point, I'm arguing with your terminology, because as an accountant and as a business administrator, use the term inflated, it, it doesn't sound, that's a negative connotation.
Okay, um, conservative.
But it's just being prepared. Yeah, conservative.
Conservative.
Great, continue.
Overly conservative estimates.
Not overly.
Well, no, but I mean, but that's how you get extra money, I mean, right?
But, but at the end of the day, being smart, okay, you're calling it extra money, which, okay, you can call what you want to call it, but being smart with that, you still safely have to be able to split out, happen to go to the community for a reference, right?
It's traditional concern.
You know, we were able to do it, we're able to apply for, you know, rod grants onto, what, fifteen projects, because we have, so we're responsible for that. But my fear is that we're not even going to have enough to pay our bills that shit.
Well, no, no offense to, uh, Newfield, but they, they don't pay their bills either, and they, they. And that's, that's what you mean, I mean.
Newfield, Newfield, I will say.
Making a turn, you're like, oh. Yeah.
So. More than worth it, that's why.
I think a comment about that, and I'm not saying that the best deals weren't important and the other thing that you mentioned, but I feel like, um, a lot of what we emphasize with our money is the facades of what we're showing as opposed to what's happening inside of our schools. But we have, we have a big problem.
How about being able to budget five and a quarter percent of our staff?
I, I understand that, but I'm not talking just about, right, but, but when you, when I look at a budget that's supporting a program that's not based on science, that's not based on the research, that's a problem for me. Now, that's what you're doing, and that's in the budget, but.
But it's not, it's, it's being paid for by, by the grant money, that's what we did, we shifted that over to that.
Again, but that doesn't need to be, then I would hope we would utilize that money for something that's more sustainable and what it will do for our students.
It's hard to say we're increasing all of this and then go back to the community and have the lowest numbers we've seen in years in academics. I mean, it's hard to justify it, it's, it's sad.
I, I don't, I don't disagree.
I know, and I know you, I know you don't, but what I'm saying to you is being on this board for, I don't know, eight, nine years, it's been the same all the time. Our student achievement is horrible, it's horrible. And to say that we're getting close to pre-pandemic scores is nothing to tune about.
I, I'm not saying it is, but I, I can underestimate.
Well, I, I'm just saying.
I'm trying to explain it, I'm trying, we can't underestimate turning over fifty percent of our state from Friday.
I'm sorry, I understand, and I.
We can't, we can't underestimate, we're turning over twenty percent of our kids every year.
You're right, you're right. You're right.
So, I mean, with that type of turnover, it, it is hard to gain traction, so with all, if I have a magic wand, things I believe.
When I started about six years ago, when we had this bad turnover, that we were still just as bad. I mean, our academics were slightly better, but not much, and, you know, we can blame turnover, we can blame COVID, we can have all these things to blame, but, you know, it, it's still frustrating.
But it did come to light when we had the data analyst that, that we were a very transient district, and we did not know that.
And I'm not placing blame, I'm just, these are factors, right? And they're factors that have to be taken into consideration. But our responsibility is to let the board know, not only next year's budget, but of the future, right? So that twenty-four, twenty-five budget is one of the, the twenty-four, twenty-five is what I'm worried about, I'll be honest with you. I mean, yes, I'm a little worried about being able to.
We go around the table, should we, like, maybe.
Yeah, 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 it's easy, right, right.
Please take out an straw off that what we're going to do with the budget.
Because we, again, we do need to put together.
Now, you don't want to?
I mean, I don't really think that's a perfect straw, but, I mean.
Well, typically, are a problem.
Yeah.
Oh, what? Oh, whatever, I don't care where you're going, I don't mean it that way, I mean, something.
Um.
We're getting off topic.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know. I can't tell you if I.
We could guess.
I think, I think, I think that's everybody's gonna vote, so.
Well, I mean, that's some problems.
It seemed the consensus that I got would be, yes, given the majority of the people on the board.
I think it'll be a five-four bit, but I think the fives, the fives will happen.
You think it'd be a five-four?
Uh, maybe.
All right.
Wait, wait, that's, if one person's asked. Maybe to the six-four bit. Or maybe a five-five, and that could be a problem.
That's the end of it.
I think that's the end of it.
Correct.
Well, no, it's definitely no, that we don't have that.
That's what I'm hearing. Are we voting?
No.
No, we can't.
What the hell?
But we need, because we need to know what we're putting together for the public here.
Well, then how are you going to know that if everybody's whispering?
Well, she, she has a good idea of what.
I said, I think I know, so we're going to roll with it.
She's an accountant, so she can count to five.
What if everybody just yells at you? That's not a straw that I want to throw.
Yeah.
Well, I put a sign up, I'm all about putting the sign up, I, I am putting the sign up for Monday. I'll, I'll put a sign up right now, that we can all just like, on the side of, put our signs.
Yes, yes, I thought I'd. Yes, yes.
What? Don't count me in, yes.
I just did my, I scared you.
Sorry, you're sorry.
All right, go ahead, move on.
We gotta go through the, uh, through the money. Oh, all right, yeah, 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 whoa, whoa, I'll take a step back.
No, to another one, you have to know that's why.
New business. All right, so long story short, we have the need to put together an ad hoc committee for regionalization.
Got it.
Right, huh?
So, rewind. Thursday, a week ago, Dr. Greener and I met with Neil Rowland with Mark Maggar and Linda Miller, who are a part of Rowland's School Regionalization Institute, and they also do feasibility studies. So, Mark Maggar, if you remember those, went to that meeting, was the gentleman who used to work for Sweden's office, he actually wrote the bill, um, I'm not being, just, whatever, he's a gentleman, stuttered quite a bit. Very, very knowledgeable about this, so, um, in, in that regard, um, I'm talking about possibly doing the feasibility study for us. So at this point, we can put together a committee, we're looking to have a meeting at five thirty, very, very brief, prior to our meeting, just, um, our committee, field committee, elk committee, and Delsey committee, and just to talk a little bit about what Dave and Mark had presented. And, you know, Dave's talking about getting this feasibility study started prior to us needing to get the approval for the grant. From Mark's standpoint, we should be getting that grant approval here in the next couple of weeks.
So we're going back to that?
Going back to that, yes, so doing the regionalization study, because Newfield at this point has done their feasibility study in Pittsburgh, and reasonable course of action will be to take a look at both feasibility studies. So, raise your hand if you.
I'll say time commitment.
I'll be there.
The time commitment on, for Monday would only be.
Being, being on this committee total, just.
Forever.
Hard to say, it is hard to say. I mean, if feasibility study work, it's all going to be done, you know, by, by outside consultant, right?
So five thirty on Monday?
Five thirty on Monday, and that meeting should be very quick. It may even end up on Zoom, depending on.
I'm a show now, then.
It, it, it may be on Zoom.
You know how I feel.
I know, I know, but I got to. All right, so who am I committing, people? I got Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle.
I said me, you did.
We can meet. We commuted.
Yeah, me and you, yeah, we commuted, here we come.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, it's just gonna be here.
Chrissy?
Sure.
Okay, Chrissy.
Chrissy, be ready.
Michelle, like, Michelle, we are.
I'm sure, yeah. I think this is a good thing. Probably can't, right? She should. We have people, I don't even do it.
I mean, I feel like I, I have a predetermined negative outlook on this whole thing, so maybe I should. Maybe I shouldn't participate, like, in the preliminary.
What, what would be some reasons that you would, that this could be a bad option?
Don't even go there.
Yeah, what, let's, yeah.
It's just a study.
Isn't there a movie called Rabbit Hole? Like, you don't wanna go.
I'm in there.
I didn't know, I didn't know there were like two things somebody could tell me, I mean, I've only been around it for like, four or five years. So I got just like.
All right, put me down on it, Michelle.
It would be more than just a, it would be.
I put on Rabbit Hole, why, probably.
Well, maybe I'll wear anything until Monday.
Yes.
All right.
Support.
All right, so let's shoot for tentatively five thirty, and we're hoping that meeting is F hour pops, okay? I will send that, I'll send it out to.
Can we just drag it out to an hour and a half, so?
Well, then, maybe I make it at six, this way it's forced to be a half hour, and then we got a meeting.
Right, yeah, that would actually.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven, though, five thirty for me.
Yeah, if you could work.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that why you did it, Grace?
Yeah, we have an F pizza, why?
Yeah, well, pizza would be fine.
Tracy has a nice pizza.
Okay, there we go.
I can ask a question, she's, she's.
My god, it's quarter to nine.
Uh, thank you.
Everybody thinks she's done.
Thank you.
Maybe we're looking at their, they're for it, doesn't have any more money in their minutes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's plenty of room. Incredible.
Okay, we're, we're all off the tracks here, that's it, we're gonna, we're gonna back on the tracks.
Not on the other agenda, right?
All right, so the other agenda is, is pretty light, actually, you know, we've already gone, the HR is the biggest part of it, so we just jump to the April twenty-fourth agenda real quick. Presentations we know about, school reports, and the resources we've covered. Education is just a couple of workshops under three and four, if you wanna take a look real quick, out of district and in district. Nothing, uh, nothing out of the ordinary. H is our superintendent's report, that's all, all stuff, like, all chicks, but we don't have anything else, that's cool. And then, uh, operations.
The in-house workshops.
Nutritional.
Farm day, farm day, twenty-six, maybe, yeah. Doing some SCL stuff, so go ahead.
We got, we got some really good feedback on the last time we did a PD, a day like that, so the, uh, SCL, uh, committee's work. Uh, especially giving grant talks.
So what, explain that thing, what is that nutritional, what does he mean, Italian kitchen? It's like a nutritionist comes in?
Yeah.
That's awesome stuff.
Yeah.
Where are we? Where are we to? Can we tell us where we're at?
That, oh, sorry, that was under education, and I think it's four, five, right, four. Yeah, they were in district workshop, we're having, that's a May twenty-sixth, we're having the in-house committee, okay? Doing articulation, doing some SCL stuff with staff.
Are they actually gonna cook food, still with them?
Well, when they made the climate and culture comments, you can dive right back to this.
Well, they are, I might have touched that, but.
Are we moving on to operations? Claims and payroll are normal, you know, take a look at the, the bill list, maybe at a moment. Budget transfers, monthly report for Board Secretary and Trevor, report for the month of February, our vote, items three and four. Cafeteria report, we may have, we may have that by the time Monday's meeting rolls around, so you may see that on there. Six, seven, eight are none. Item number nine, we drove one student to need, uh, order, yeah, out of district, homebound instruction. Item ten, transportation contracts, uh, you will notice that the law effective date was February third, that got lost in, uh, the shovel, unfortunately. But the student has been transported. Item eleven, twelve, thirteen are none. Fourteen for donations, um, so the secretary over at Janvier knows the owner's dog, the barrel, Carmel, of Black House. They were purchased, they got bought out by, um, school specialty, so they reached out to Sandy, who then reached out to Henry Hobbit, principal, who then reached out to me stating they have all of this equipment that they're willing to donate and get rid of, and basically not, sorry, liquidate, but donate, um, before the school specialty comes in. So we were given a list of about two thousand items that we could pick from, uh, put that on a, on a Google sheet, shared it out with the schools, school principals, then shared it out with, uh, teachers and or staff who would be interested in some of the items. We received those items, I believe, on Wednesday, uh, spring break, and we distributed them throughout the schools Friday. I don't believe we got all of the items that were requested, because again, it was, they have other people that they were donating to, but it was still a very, very nice amount of items, um, and I think the kid would be excited.
That's awesome, yeah.
Uh, so again, that resolution will, um, come with us writing the letter, same place.
Same, thank you.
Correct, correct. The next item.
Should we give them a dollar value of their stuff, in case they wanna tax some reasons or something, or are you hoping to?
I mean, they would write it off, they would write it off as inventory, um, within their books, but they did say that their estimated cost for us, given the initial list, was ten to thirteen thousand dollars.
What is Flyhouse, what is it?
That's the name of their company, so if you use flyhouse.com, it shows all of the items.
They're, they're closing their company, too.
Correct, they live, uh, like, north Jersey, over, something like that, um, but again, they, they shipped it down to us, I think for a cheap price of maybe two hundred and forty dollars.
And who has a connection with them? Mary Gate?
No, maybe those few were the secretary over at Janvier.
Uh, Janvier, I was thinking, that's, that's awesome.
Yes, and then Doug also did give me some information on who else was a little bit, um, in there, so again, we'll, we'll cover all bases on the thank you notes for, for everybody.
Yeah, that's really cool.
That was really nice.
Yeah, it was, it was exciting to go back there and see all the stuff we got, I think it was fun stuff. Second one was the donation of a metal bench by the Furman family to be placed in the school garden at the Ritter School.
At the who? Furman.
Furman family.
Yeah, Joyce, Joyce Farming, he was a longtime teacher here at Ritter, and, um, it's passed to me. So, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And again, that resolution comes with, uh, the availability of Mr. Ted Peters being able to prepare and distribute a thank you letter to, to that family. Item fifteen is the safety grant, uh, we moved last year, we got roughly sixty-six hundred dollars, this year it's only two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Um, so again, we begin the replacement schedule with the A E D machine and the tablet for necessary accessories, that's what we're gonna use that, that one for. Uh, item sixteen is the transportation service fill-up contract, again, as normal, that we go in every year. Item number seventeen is the actual rod grant submission, so again, uh, this night's agenda, we did the L R F, the major amendment to list these projects. This resolution is so that the architects can submit the actual rod grant applications for those projects. Uh, eighteen is the school's health insurance fund rate, that's the shift. I put in the administrative content for historical purposes, the twenty, twenty-two and twenty-two-three rates, as well as the twenty-one, twenty-two rates. And again, the increase from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three was about, I think, point two percent, point oh two percent, it was, it was really low, and again, this year it was a three point three seven increase, so again, really, really low, especially compared to the sixteen percent increase in the state. Item nineteen is again, the state supplemental stabilization aid request, named out of the one sixty-eight, because again, we have to request it, as well as, um, show board approval of the request and the submission of the application. Item number twenty will be the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, uh, the only change in here again was the numbers of the general fund to include the one sixty-eight, um, fund balance, as well as the snippet down here to again, state that the district is held for the stabilization aid, um, in this amount of money, this is where we're gonna put it, this is what's going to be supported. And then item number twenty-one, I will update that, right now it does seem placelover for resolution for the labor of school, um, for, for getting with it. Yeah, that's operations.
All right, uh, we already did the pre-organization.
Yep.
Public comment, make my show, I have a public comment, a second. All favor. Uh, some more statements.
How did the labor school bid go?
Fifty-five thousand was the high bid.
Is the board accepting it?
No, we're gonna be rejecting it, uh, on Monday. Essentially, at this point, uh, based on advice of our legal counsel, um, we're now able to go out privately negotiating a sale, uh, because we went through the bid process unsuccessfully, so I believe that's probably gonna be the recommendation of the board is to, uh, you know, move forward with, uh, you know, marketing it, possibly with a, a real estate company or something, try and negotiate a sale privately with someone. Any other questions?
That's it.
Seen no one else to make a place to close, public comment, a second. All in favor? All right, our meeting's scheduled for the twenty-fourth, so, yeah, Monday.
Just to kind of, um, wrap up on the labor at school, I did receive a request from a person who does live in Franklin Township for the, uh, storage unit that's on that property, um, it's like an old container, there's some old storage items in there, he was just wondering if the board would be willing to give it to him and let him donate it, um, I told him to reach out and submit a letter or, or request to. It's, I don't, maybe like a, I don't, there's nothing in there of value at all.
A shipping container?
Yeah, that little one, like, shark behind the, at the school.
How are you gonna give stuff there?
It's large, but we have to keep for it.
So he's, he doesn't want the stuff in it, he just wants the container?
Correct, but he has not submitted a rent request, so I just wanna put that out on the board.
Can we do that?
I'm just telling people who request things like that, like, I would never think to ask for.
But we could sell that, though.
Why would you not sell it?
Yeah, we could sell it, why would we give that?
That's what I'm saying, like, he, he could, yeah, he could request to, to, for you to just donate it to him, however. If that request comes, and the board does not wish to do that, they can, they can counter, they can, they can press on himself.
He goes, but he deals, right?
Yes, yes, we just had it, it was, and so we're like, no, we're still not doing it, so.
Yeah, so basically, this guy's crying over his face. Cause who, who?
Yeah.
Maybe till that, like, you know, we're not looking, uh, they just.
File an insurance.
Yeah, nobody, nobody.
Just under all business, under the yearly planning, just make sure that you fill out your, um, personal financial disclosure.
Yes, yeah.
Just saying, there were some three that had not.
Do you know who they are?
I do.
Did I, did I do mine?
I did mine.
I think I did mine.
I haven't done mine, do you?
I did a new one.
I did mine.
Chrissy, then one administrator.
Oh. That made me nervous, like. I know, it's hard in, I don't remember.
I like to do it soon as I did, it's like.
Right. It's what I do, yeah, I do my own.
School safety question.
Someone. Did I mention it?
Well, dude, one is like, what kind of training do teachers get on the, in our administration? Does everybody know, or nurses?
Nurses. We don't have our.
Yeah, we do.
We do, too.
They have a policy, and the nurses can train on that.
So what if, what if the nurses aren't there?
I was just gonna say, what about when the nurses aren't there? Cause I know, like, my daughter's in the middle school, she says a lot of times the nurse isn't there.
There's a nurse. I'm really into that, but, I don't mean double check, I mean, listen, Ted, Ted, you can be trained, I, I see, but.
All right, so the other one.
We have a policy on that.
The other one was with the, uh, with the bleed and tourniquets, kids, do they have, the teachers have training, or do they know, are they excessively?
Yes.
Excessively trained.
And, uh, those were my other questions.
Who trains them?
Um, actually, Mr. Peters, um, he does the training for us, I was, most of the time, it's like a train to train, like, the county will have, stop to bleed.
Where, where are they located, those kids?
I'd have to get.
Cause I was talking to, uh, the principals of the, one of the police guys about it, and they were saying some of the districts, because it's, it's government county, uh, it's like, two fires, they have them right next to the fire, you know what I mean? They're readily.
Little plastic, you know, from all, all.
Yeah, just like that, and, uh, with the, the fibular.
A lot of them have remains.
Or the dribblers are located there.
I'm talking to.
A lot of them have remains.
Yeah, in them, and ours may be, I just don't.
The tourniquets, though, isn't that easy?
Now you stop to bleed.
Well, here, that's a perfect example, Troy, you need to know what the, what the, sorry.
You're right, I do.
Somebody comes in here and shoots me right here. That might be the only thing, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
Right, when they shoot you, he's stepping on you.
I think the red dot's probably pointed at me, right, so, you're gonna, you're gonna know where it's at.
All right, I think we're gonna do a turn, a second. All in favor?